At this time, we'll call the January 17th, 2017 Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I would like to recognize for invocation Dr. J.F. Peel and Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese for the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Lord God, we thank you this evening for allowing us to live in a wonderful place, Lord, to be blessed in so many ways with all the great people that were around, Lord, the wonderful values and just the spirit of community and family that we're able to live in every single day here in Alexander County, God. We're just thankful for all that you have done for us, Lord, for protecting us and taking care of us, Lord. And tonight, as we do official business, Lord, for the county, Lord, we just pray that you would lead all minds to work together, Lord, all facets to work together, and that we can truly continue to do great things for our people, Lord, to make our community the very best that it can be, Lord, to be a light and to shine real brightly for you, God, and all that we do. We love you, we thank you, Lord, mostly we thank you for Jesus, Lord, and our salvation and what he's done for us, in his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any commissioners' reports?
I'll just mention this. If you've been listening to the news at all, Friday, we're going to be transitioning from one government to the next. And normally, we have a peaceful transition of power, and we're having that this time as well. But I just think it's sad, all the protests that are planned. You know, when you look at other countries, sometimes when they have elections, you have mass rioting, chaos out in the streets. And to see that being planned in the United States of America is very sad. So I just think, you know, I know there's nothing we can do about that here in little Alexander County, but it's just a sad, sad state of our country right now. And, you know, most of the people in Alexander County, regardless of who they voted for, we get along and we understand that not every election goes our way. So that's all I have.
Anything else from you gentlemen?
Just starting a new year for us, I'm looking forward to good things in a new year with our board and welcoming on Dr. Peel too, and all of us working together will try to do the best we can for Alexander County.
I did mention, I want to mention one other thing, I forgot about this. The election, I know there's been a lot of talk about hacking during the election process, and I think that's the wrong use of the word. There's never been any kind of charges made that any voting machines were changed or that those tabulations were changed. And I want to report that in Alexander County, and we need to thank our election workers, they did a great job this election. We had new voting equipment, and I know that there had been some talk a couple of years ago about why did we need to buy new voting equipment? Why did we need to do this? If you look at Durham County, that's why we needed to get this voting equipment. They had severe problems because their county commissioners put off till the next election buying new voting equipment when they were supposed to have, just like we were. So our people did a great job, and I wish to thank them, so.
Also, I think it was really good to see the turnout, what we saw from our citizens. I mean, you know, it's your right to vote, it was earned through bloodshed and things of that nature, and for people to come out, it was really good to see us above the 70% of our voters coming out. It should be that way all the time. It's sad that it's not, but it was really good to see that.
It's, you know, for years, I'm a former history teacher and have studied government and organizations throughout time, and when, at any election, you have a choice, like people had a choice in Alexander County. Not everyone chose to vote for me, but when it's all said and done, I'm the person that's going to be representing you, and I want to do that to the very, very best of my ability. And if we could just, gosh, if we could just see that across our state and across our country, to where people could work together, put aside differences, and don't focus on what you disagree on, but focus on what you agree on and work together to do good things. That's certainly my goal for Alexander County, and it would be nice to see that happen in the state of North Carolina and the United States as well.
Reese, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would mention, actually, the chairman and I had the opportunity to attend the Alexander County chapter of the NAACP's Martin Luther King. I don't know what term to use, I mean, it was also actually, I don't say, you know, remembrance or, but anyway, it was at the Hitnights Center Monday, yesterday. And just want to say to the folks that organized it, the folks that spoke, the folks that performed, phenomenal music, and I, in my opinion, it was a good turnout. I mean, a good turnout of, you know, I don't want to say county officials and, you know, but county folks as well as private citizens, you know, and as, I guess, I would say, I was, I've gone through school, obviously, you know, and you hear, in history class, you learn this and that. But I guess yesterday, yesterday was the first significant, like I said, I don't want to say ceremony, but, or owed to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., but he did indeed have a very profound effect on our society. And if we would only, if we would only spread kindness and do a lot of things that he tried to preach, the world would be a better place. And I thoroughly enjoyed being, you know, being a part of it.
And their speaker was a gentleman by the name of Chaz Beasley, who has roots in Alexander County. He lived here about eight or nine years, but Chaz is an attorney in Charlotte, went to Harvard University, and then earned his law degree at Georgetown University. And he was elected to the North Carolina House of Representatives, the 92nd District in 2016, 31-year-old young man. And to say he was impressive would be an understatement. He's the son of Ms. Sherry Bruner of Conover, who is a graduate of Alexander Central, I believe, and the grandson of the late Sonny Bruner and Mrs. Shirley Barker Bruner of Alexander County. And it's kind of nice to see one of our own, you know, rise and do so well, but he's a very sharp young man, and I think obviously will have a bright future.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, and I promise I'll be quiet.
Promise?
Mr. French, County Manager Rick French and myself actually spent the end of last week in Raleigh at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners meeting there. We were working on legislative goals for the 100 counties of North Carolina, and the meeting went pretty well. We, of course, had some conflicts, as, you know, all rural counties do with the larger, more urban counties, but all in all, it was a very good meeting, and we did get to, the governor came and spoke during lunch, Governor Roy Cooper. So it's going to be an interesting six months in Raleigh, to say the least, so.
Lot of transition. All right, is that it, guys? Everybody? At this time, I would accept a motion for the adoption of our agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption of the agenda, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Starnes, but we do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Okay. At this time, I would recognize John Pilkington, Director of Planning and Development, Public Hearing, rezoning case 16-6 Kazai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board, and welcome to Dr. Peel. I guess the good news is, you get your first rezoning out of the way, and there doesn't appear to be anybody here to protest against it, so.
That's a good sign, right?
Should be painless, yeah.
Batting a thousand.
Should be painless. Before we deny, we have a public hearing for rezoning request, 16-6. The applicant is Mr. Greg Kazai. The property owner of this property is Lynn Carlton. It's currently zoned highway commercial. Mr. Kazai is requesting that the property be rezoned from highway commercial to RA20 residential. He's asking for only a portion of this property to be rezoned, which would be approximately 7.64 acres. The property is located just north of Evans Drug and just south of the Mexico Viejo property. It actually adjoins that. Land uses within 100 feet to the north are commercial, the south are also commercial, to the east and west are residential. The zoning districts within 100 feet or to the north are highway commercial, to the south, commercial, and to the east and west, residential. Or, excuse me, I misread that. North and south are highway commercial. The east is zoned RA20, and to the west is zoned RA20 and highway commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission met in December, the 9th, I believe. Yeah, I think December 9th, I apologize. And unanimously recommended that this property be, that 7.64 acres be rezoned from its current highway commercial to RA20. Mr. Kazai's plans are to construct a multifamily development on the property. He is retaining 1 and 1/2 acres alone, but you can see in your map, and I apologize to those in the audience and people that may watch this online or on the cable channel, the map is kind of blurry because I had to scan it, but there's 1 and 1/2 acres that is going to be kept as highway commercial that adjoins NC Highway 127. As noted in the recommendation, the 2008 comprehensive plan recommends that this property be retained as commercial. However, based on the topography and the demographics of the area, the larger portion of this property would probably be more suitable for a multifamily development as opposed to commercial. And I think retaining the 1 and 1/2 acres that fronts on NC Highway 127 kind of protects commercial development in that area and doesn't, wouldn't hinder the development of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was that it be approved, and the proposed use is, as I noted, that proposed use would be more suitable for a larger portion of the property based on demographics and access to travel routes for commuters, and also that the proposed rezoning and potential use is consistent with the growth patterns in the area. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them. If not.
What's the difference between RA20 and R20?
RA20 allows multifamily developments. The R20 is.
Does not.
Yeah, does not, strictly single-family. He will still have to go through the planned development, multifamily development process, which will be a conditional use that comes back to this board as well. But initially, the property needed to be rezoned because you couldn't do a multifamily development within highway commercial.
John, do you know, would this be a phased project, or was this, I mean, it's 7.64 acres is a lot for multifamily, so.
It's possible, and Mr. Kazai is here. He hasn't submitted a site plan yet. I had actually asked him not to, I kind of tried to stay on the process of you're supposed to take into consideration everything when rezoning a property. So I didn't want a site plan because it looks too much like you're approving a specific project. But his intent, I think, would be to phase in the project, similar to what he's done. If you're familiar with out, behind Town Hall, he's doing some duplexes over there. This would be multifamily and not just two-family, but it would be, he's phased that project, and I would assume phase this one as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would mention, and it doesn't pertain specifically to this, you know, this rezoning case or hearing, but with being, you know, the business that I'm in, and actually John, I've been in his office several times, and I've talked to him on the phone several times, there, in my opinion, there are quite a few things in our zoning code, I guess you say zoning code or rules, whatever, that could be, that could possibly be better. One of them being the only zoning in Alexander County you can build multifamily housing on is RA20. You know, to me, a large apartment complex is definitely a commercial venture. You know, the way I see it, you're, you know, yes, I understand people be living there, but it's very similar to, you know, very similar to mini warehouses. You're renting space, and, you know, many warehouses have to be built on commercial. Well, you know, and there are just, you know, there are several things, and this isn't only, you know, this isn't only, this is just one of the things that I've sort of run into, that I've kind of scratched my head as a real estate agent, general contractor, and, you know, but, you know, but I, you know, so it's, it's, to me, it's almost, I don't want to say silly, but it's, to me, it's almost silly that we have to have a rezoning case to change a piece of property that is commercial to something different to, you know, for a.
Income-producing.
For an income-producing project that, you know, if, I mean, that is much more commercial than it is residential. But, you know, that's just my opinion, you know.
And traffic laws.
Right, and that's something, that's something that we, you know, that we could potentially look at in the future, you know, is just trying to, you know, I don't know if we want to do that or not, but.
Josh, I agree with you. You bring up a very good point. The last, I believe it was the year 2000, was when we had our first countywide zoning, and it has not been updated except here and there ever since, and maybe that's a good job for you, John.
Well, not to veer this train too far off the tracks. We are currently, as you're aware, the town of Taylorsville contracts with the county now for us to provide their planning services. And what I have been working on, and the town has a contract with the Council of Governments for there to be a combined, there'll be one zoning ordinance. It will retain a lot of, Taylorsville will retain a lot of its current zoning, and a lot, a lot of stuff will not change, but we have made some tweaks that, I apologize. We have made some tweaks to it, to include things and simplify things as well. Nothing in the county is going to change at all. It's really more about, as far as zoning, as far as zoning of property, we will not be changing any zoning of property within the county's jurisdiction. But we will have to include some of the town's jurisdictions within the county's ordinance. So it will be one zoning ordinance, and it identifies property within the town and then property within the county. But in doing that, we have removed some things that are redundant or that are too, you know, that don't need to be, you know, as detailed as they are, to try to simplify it a little bit. One of the things we had not addressed in that instance would be something like this, allowing those types of projects in commercial. And that's something that when we, when it's presented, because both the town will have to adopt a new, a unified ordinance, and the county would have to adopt the unified ordinance as well, that we could add to, look at how to add that to and allow commercial development, or, excuse me, allow multifamily, high-density multifamily to just exist in commercial developments.
Well, and I'm assuming, just, I know the zoning ordinances in this situation pretty well, you know, and I assume this will be, this project will be, will fall under the current guidelines where you, you know, you take the area of the project.
Yes.
You subtract 20,000 square feet, and then you divide by 5,000 square feet to get a maximum number of units.
I'm not going to say it's exactly that way, just not having it in front of me, but yeah, there's a density that can't be exceeded, yes.
Okay. Like I say, just general questions.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I just know, I know I've had dealings in the past where that was, you know, that was.
Well, I would suggest that, I know we're veering off point here, but it's been 17 years since the last zoning, the real updates have been made. We need to look at that.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of, there's been a lot of changes in transportation, growth patterns, there's been a lot of changes in this county in 17 years.
I agree. I mean, that's kind of where I'm, you know, that's why I'm saying what I'm saying is.
Utilities.
You know, and I'll say this, I know at one point, at least from certain perspectives, you know, rental property was not looked upon favorably from local government's perspective because you're not generating, you know, you're not going to generate as much property tax as if there was, you know, single-family dwellings provided that housed that many same people. And, you know, and, but you still have the services to provide, being education and what, you know, and the other things, and so a lot of times, but in Alexander County right now, you know, the school system needs more students for funding, and, you know, the, a lot of things have changed, like I say, in 17 years, or even in 10 years, where, you know, we may need to be a little more, a little more progressive in our thinking from a zoning perspective, you know.
Well, maybe we, might be a good idea to form some type of task force to review that and look at what might make more sense. I mean, you could lay a cell phone out here from 2000, 2016, you wouldn't recognize it. So we need to take that same approach with our zoning. Maybe we take that offline as a to-do item and establish task force to work with John and come up with some provisions or changes. I mean, we got something here we need to deal with.
We've actually already got that task force set up, we can just.
Reinvigorate it.
Reinvigorate it.
Okay. Any other questions on the?
Yes, sir. Back to the actual property, the approximately, I guess, the approximate acre that's still left on 127, what is that, access to the property, or what would that be?
Now, that property, that portion, what Mr. Kazai had done was, this property exists as a nine-acre tract, and he did not, he has an option to purchase contingent upon the rezoning going through. He has had the property surveyed and established the meets and bounds for, thank you Chad, for what portion will actually be rezoned. And you can see there on that, the, what I've outlined, what's in pink is what's going to be left and state commercial.
Save as an out parcel. The bottom, right-hand corner that's.
Yeah, I think he's talking about the southern portion that's on Highway 127.
Yes, it would be used for access. It's possible, and again, it would certainly be depending upon the adjoining property owner where Mexico Viejo is, that there may be dual access there. That sort of thing also has to be approved by the DOT as to where his access would actually be.
DOT will require a turn lane.
Yes, more, yeah, more than likely, yes. And there's just a lot of room between the road and the road right of way and the actual access to the property.
Just like, you know, there's a lot of rock in the ground, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Because Bethlehem, you know, because Bethlehem Restaurant, then, yeah.
And it is certainly possible, too, that he may do access across the northern end of the property that's zoned commercial, which would actually access both the multifamily and the commercial property as well.
Which may be what DOT wants to happen. I mean, that's the thing, it just, yeah.
That sort of thing's not set in stone yet.
All right. Okay. Any other questions, gentlemen? All right. Would somebody like to entertain a motion?
You got to close the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I was asking, okay. Second, motion, second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the, close session, raise your right hand. Okay. Now, sorry, I've got ahead of myself. Now, at this time.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to change from highway commercial to RA20 based on the proposed use would be more suitable for the larger portion of the property based on the demographics of the area and its access to travel routes for commuters. And it's rezoning and the potential use is consistent with the growth patterns in this area, so.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the.
And I'll be in touch, and I'll talk with the county manager about future as far as the zoning.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Kazai, for being willing to invest in our county.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. At this time, and I apologize, I will try to get your name right, but the 2006 Board Audit Presentation, Ms. Chaw Moses, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes. I didn't try all the, no, it's fair, I just.
Good evening. I'm Kertain Chaw Moses with Martin Starnes &amp; Associates. I am the Audit Manager for the county's audit for fiscal year 16, and I'd like to thank you for having us as your auditor again another year. What we're going to do is we're going to go over the 2016 financial statements that were audited, and this is as of June 30, 2016. Our firm issued an unmodified opinion. It means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe the financial statements would be misleading to its readers. So in other words, the county passed its audit, and we'd like to thank the finance staff for their hard work in helping us get through the audit and getting the audit report submitted. Today, it is submitted to the local government commission, and they have approved the report. Next. So if we look at general funds revenues, the top three revenue source for the county is, of course, number one, property taxes, followed by local option sales taxes at 18%, restricted intergovernmental revenues at 13%, and that includes federal, state, and local grants. So if we look at the top revenue source, there was an increase in the prior year of 15.6%, and that's mainly due to the 12.5 cent increase in the property tax rate from prior year. The overall tax collection rate for the county also increased. It went from 96.7% to 97.02%. This is your local option sales tax. We saw an increase from the prior year of 7%. The increase was due to statewide sales tax growth for the local option sales taxes. Next. And then the restricted intergovernmental, where all your grants are in, there's an approximate increase of $16,000 from the prior year. This is consistent to the prior year, so I didn't have a lot to say on this one. And if we look at the expenditures for the general fund, the top three functions of government that have the largest expenditures include human services at 31%, public safety at 26%, and education at 17%. So human services, we saw an increase. So, human services, we saw an increase of $240,000 from the prior year. In this function, you'll see the Health Department, Department of Social Services, Senior Center, and the Veterans Services. And the increase here is mostly, was mostly in the DSS administration. For public safety, there's a 6.7% increase from the prior year, and in this function of government, you'll have Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Department, the Detention Center, Fire Protection, Emergency Communications, Inspections, and Emergency Medical Services. The increase here is, the largest increase was in the Sheriff's Office, and we saw purchases of vehicles and equipment for public safety programs. And then finally, in the general fund, the third top expenditure was in education. And so, in this line, you're going to see the Board of Education, Auditorium reimbursements, and the CBCC expenditures. There's an approximate increase from the prior year of about $400,000, and the increase here is in the current expense line with the county appropriation to the Board of Education. So, if we look at debt in the general fund, 2016, the principal payments was about $1.6 million. Interest paid was $341,000. And you'll see there, the total debt for the county at the end of 2016 was $10 million, of which 6.7 is in public safety and 3 million is in education. And to the right of that, you'll see when those debt are expected to be paid off.
Is all of that $6.6 million in the law enforcement center? Okay.
Next. So, if we look at fund balance, fund balance is defined as your assets plus your deferred outflows minus your liabilities plus your deferred inflows, and that's where you'll get to fund balance or net position. Within the general fund, you'll see five classifications on Exhibit C of the audit report. You'll see non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So, the, in, within your non-spendable, you'll have inventories or prepaids or items that are not in spent, in cash form. And then the restricted fund balance will be fund balance that's restricted by grantors or by state statute. And then committed fund balance, an example of committed fund balance is a project ordinance that the board had approved, and it takes a second motion from the board to spend the funds. And also, items that are in committed fund balance do not lapse at year-end. So, that's a little bit different from your assigned fund balance. On the assigned side, those appropriations do lapse at year-end. An example of an assigned fund balance that the county has is the appropriation of fund balance for subsequent years expenditures. So, everything else that's not in one of those four categories is put into your unassigned Available fund balance, as defined by the Local Government Commission, is the general fund's total fund balance, less your non-spendable fund balance category, and less your stabilization by state statute, and then you arrive at available fund balance. And the, the Local Government Commission uses this amount to, and percentage, to compare you with other units your size. If you get below your peer group level, you may receive a unit letter from the Local Government Commission.
Wait, excuse me a second. And, Mr. French, if you, just so, the folks that are here, you know, understand what a letter from the, essentially, if, if our, if our available fund balance goes below a certain amount, what is the repercussion?
Well, it depends on how close you are, but on your fund balance number, of course, as she stated, they prefer us to be in a certain, close to the average, but it was restrict borrowing money, it restrict projects, there's drastic things LGC could do, but it generally, it deals with borrowing money and doing things. It could affect some of the grants that we apply for, and things of that nature. So, it's pretty serious. We don't like to, we don't like to, you know-
So, it could, so it could cause significant-
Oh, yeah.
Problem.
Plus, you know, when they write the letter, and Jennifer Herman can tell you this, that our experience has been, you know, they always want to tell you how you're going to fix it. So, fixing it usually means increasing something or reducing something, so it's not as simple as that, but it's something you don't want to get as a letter from the LGC.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, overall, there was an increase in general fund fund balance of $3.6 million. The available fund balance percentage for Alexander County is 28.35%, and that's calculated out of total expenditures and transfers out. So, as Mr. French was saying, the Local Government Commission, what they require is for a unit to have 8%. So, looking at the, the county's percentage, you're about three and a half months' worth of expenditures. So, if we put that in terms of dollars, the total fund balance in the general fund was $13.3 million, and then you're, again, we take out your non-spendable, your stabilization by state statute, so dollar-wise, you have available fund balance of close to $10 million, and that is an increase from the prior year of almost $4 million. And that increase is mainly due to the increase in overall fund balance in the general fund. So, looking at the solid waste fund, instead of referring to fund balance in your enterprise fund, we talk about net position. So, the cash from operations in the solid waste fund was $26,000 during fiscal year 16. You had a budgetary net income of $13,000. This net income does not include your capital assets, your debt, your depreciation, and so this is on a budgetary basis. So, if we're looking at your full accrual change in net position for that fund, there was a loss of $82,000 from the prior year. And then the total net position ended up at $79,000, and then unrestricted net position was a deficit of $653,000. And what happens is on, there's a, a category called net invest, excuse me, net investment in capital assets, and so that actually exceeded the unrestricted, the total net position, therefore it created a deficit unrestricted net position for the county in this fund. So, moving on to the water funds of the county, you've got Bethlehem Water District and the county's Water and Sewer Fund. So, cash from operations for the Bethlehem Water District, $701,000, budgetary net income of $365,000. And the county Water and Sewer, $563,000 in cash from operations and $251,000 in net income. So, if we look at that on the full accrual basis, you had positive change in net positions in both funds. Bethlehem was $452,000, and the county Water and Sewer is $174,000. So, if we look at those funds' net position, total net position was $2.6 million for Bethlehem and $9.4 million for the county. And unrestricted net position, 1.4 versus, 1.0, almost 1.5 million versus 1.4 million for the county. The unrestricted net position here is similar to the general fund's available fund balance or unassigned fund balance. So, if we look at debt in those two funds, outstanding debt at the end of the year is $322,000 for the Bethlehem Fund, $5.4 million for the county fund, and then the principal paid, you can see there, and then the year of the debt that, those debt will be paid off, 2018 and 2035. That's all I have for tonight. Yes.
Could you go back to the solid waste net position fund, please?
Yes.
And what does that actually mean?
What does that actually mean?
Yes, ma'am.
The whole fund, the equation that we saw earlier, assets minus your liabilities and deferred inflows and outflows, at the end of the year, the total net position in that fund was $79,000. There's this, this thing called net investment in capital assets, and what that consists of is all your capital assets in that fund, and less-
What are your capital assets? So, that would be-
Capital plant.
Your equipment-
Mm-hmm.
Buildings, land.
That's correct. All of that put together, and then any debt that's related to purchasing those capital assets is taken out of this number, so the net effect is $733,000. So, if you're kind of looking at it on Exhibit G, your net investment in capital asset outweighs your unre, is more than your total net position, and so then that's why it created a deficit unrestricted net position. I'm sorry. Your net position is $79,000, and then your net investment in capital assets is 733, and so then there's another category of net, net position in your enterprise fund called your unrestricted net position, so then it made it a deficit. So, if you look at your total assets, your non-current assets, that's where that $733,630 is, is, and there's no debt related to it.
Those are long-term capital assets, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, non-current assets, that's correct. And those two categories are, they're just different categories that, that's required by general, generally accepted accounting principles.
I guess, there's a question because they're, they're getting hung up on the, the negative, but the, it's a long-term asset, it's not a current asset, so it's, it's considered something that you can't turn into cash very readily.
Regularly, that's correct.
Okay, and that's why it's creating the negative.
Well, one question on the water funds debt. And, Mr. French, this may be for you. The Bethlehem Water System, the outstanding debt, $322,692, you know, debt will be paid off in 2018. What is the, I mean, I see there's not a lot of interest that we put, you know, we didn't pay much interest based on this information in, you know, year 2016. Do you know what the rate, I mean, like what the interest rate is?
No, it's in the, it's in the audit report.
Okay, so it's in the big report. Because, you know, what's that, I'm sorry? The, the water, the, the water fund debt, I mean, the Bethlehem, the Bethlehem's system-
You're probably talking in your schedule.
Two percent or three percent?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, I was saying, I mean, you know-
1.91.
The debt, the debt is down to $322,000, you know, which compared to the county system is very, very manageable. You know, I've had a lot of people ask me when that debt service was ever going to come off, and I think there's no, there's, you know, once the debt service is off, then we have maintenance and repair costs, so, you know, I'm not, you know, I don't know where that'll put us, but I was really just kind of wondering what the interest rates were, you know, and is there any, you know, but obviously, if it's 2% or so, there's no point in doing anything at all.
Water, water, you know, debt on water lines is always, you know, or has been, since I've been on this board, around 2% to 3%, so I don't know.
Very, yeah.
Well, get the tax-exempt interest, and, you know, usually that's about 65% of the current prime lending rate.
Well, and, I'll say, and if it's 2%, you know, with, the economy looks like it's getting a little healthier based on interest rates going up and, you know, some other factors. I'm not an economist, but when you look at, when you look at inflation, 2%, I mean, there may be a net discount almost, so.
I, I want to point out one thing, if you go back to fund balance, and it's, it's taken eight years, but I finally get to say that we have a fund balance that's over 24%. And I believe when you guys came in two years ago, we were right at 19%, 18, 19, am I correct on that?
It's 18.
18%, and we've got it up to 28% now. And I say we, you know, it's having commissioners that are concerned about every dollar we spend, our department heads, they've done a good job, our finance department, and the taxpayers, you know, to be frankly, and, frank, and also, sales tax. Sales tax is up, I'm going to say it's 3%, 4% over the last few years, and, from two years ago. So, all that makes a difference, and, and we've finally got where I feel good about our fund balance. Back in, you know, 15 years ago, our fund balance in Alexander County, of course, I wasn't on the board then, but it was less than 2.5%, which means you've got about two weeks of funds put back in reserve to pay bills. And, you know, that's just not acceptable. And, but we've, we've worked very hard for the last 15 years, many commissioners on this board have, and I, I think it's just an accomplishment, and, and our taxpayers, you know, it's property tax owners as well, so.
Well, I, you know, I think that, that was accomplished through a very hard decision, one nobody wanted to make, was raising the tax rate. You know, I'd like to sit here and say kudos, we found ways to save money, and that's how we funded it, but in reality, it was a tax increase.
Well, it was partially.
Partially.
I say, but, but, Mr. Chairman, I, I will say, and it, you know, definitely what was not me, you know, but I do believe that as a board-
Oh, yeah.
-in the past two years, you know, if you look at, if you look at our budget and you look at actual expenditures, we, you know, we're, we're being frugal, and we're, you know, and we're asking, we're asking everybody, you know, we're asking departments, we're asking Mr. French, I know he gets tired of hearing it, you know, to, to watch, to watch every dime. And anytime we can, you know, our expenditure's coming under budget, you know, I think the departments, the department heads, the, you know, county manager, you know, everybody needs a pat on the back, even though we, we have been, some of us especially, have been almost obnoxious about, you know, not spending money.
Well, I think it's one of those things that had to be done. Our fund balance couldn't continue to slide, and, and again, no matter how we all felt about that decision, none of us liked it, but we had to right-size our fund balance and move on down the road so that you could do things in the future. And, yes, Josh, I agree, I think we've looked at this stuff very, very thoroughly, and not just going to catch every single thing where you have an opportunity. I will say, just looking at the audit financials, although rates have gone up a little bit, I see a couple here that we might want to at least reach out to our lender and see if they may modify. We're at 3.19 on the law enforcement center, I think. And again, typically, you'll see nonprofits usually priced somewhere at about 65% of the current prime lending rate. And plus, we probably look a little bit better with that fund balance.
I can speak to that now.
Okay.
We have looked at that, the way those loan contracts are written, we are not allowed to refinance.
So, we have a prepayment penalty?
Large, yes.
Any chance we reach, have we calculated a prepayment penalty in comparison to rate savings?
I've had a financial analyst look it over, and it would be more expensive to refinance than to continue paying what we have now.
Okay.
Who were the, who were the, I mean, like, Milton, one of the loans that you, you're mentioning, who were they with?
Bank of America.
Bank of America. Typically, your, your larger bank, Wells Sun Trust is a big player in the municipality. BB&amp;T does a good bit of it, too, they're very good at it.
I mean, I hate to say this because Milton has the position he has in the private sector, but, you know, banking is legal robbery, so.
We have looked at the ones that are available to be refinanced, and several of these that are on here, we have done in the past, so the ones that we have now that probably will look like you should talk about refinancing, we have already discussed that with our consultants, and it would cost more to refinance than to continue, to continue paying what we're doing now.
Well, maybe in 2011, 3.19 was a good rate. Well, maybe in 2011, 3.19 was a good rate because probably the risk parameters of our deal was.
It was at the time.
We look better today than we did then. Now we.
Well, and fund balance matters, so.
Thank you, Chairman.
It allows you to borrow at a lower rate. And I'll say one other thing about what Josh was saying. You know, we, as a board, we've tried to scrutinize everything, and I think where we have spent money at, it is to get the biggest bang for the buck, and I think we've done a good job with that, so.
In regard to our peers, what would you say is the average fund balance of our peer group?
The most recent figures are from the 2015 fiscal year, and the average for our peer group was 31.19%.
So we're just a little bit below, okay? And who would be in our peer group?
Um, I've got it right here.
Mecklenburg.
Forsyth.
Lake.
Orange.
White.
What's the state recommendation? Not the, not the lowest that they recommend?
Average.
They just, they recommend the average?
They do not want us to fall below 50% of the average of our peer group. In our peer group, we are looking at Anson County, Ash, Bladen, Davie, Macon, Scotland, Yadkin County, Richmond County.
Okay. So some folks kind of look like, some of those are eastern, but they're agriculture in nature and.
Yes. Well, and the peer group is based on the population, so it's from 25,000 to 50,000 population.
I'm just happy we're over 24%.
I've been preaching on that for years now.
Yeah, I just reiterate, too, great job of the finance committee and by Mr. French, and I'm sure, you know, I kind of call him a lot, and we're talking about saving and all of this stuff, but I appreciate the help he's willing to give us anytime, and working with other departments, that's what takes everybody working together. Thanks.
Any other questions? Do we need to vote on this to accept the results?
Yes.
Okay. You've heard the results of the audit. I guess we need a motion to.
Approve.
Approve?
I make a motion to accept the audit by Martin and Starrens.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the audit by Martin Starrens, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's kind of also nice to see a company that has its roots in Alexander County, its beginning, be the one that does our audit. So, the company's done very well. All right. Moving along, I would recognize Mr. Rick French, county sales tax revenue for 2016, 2017 budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sales tax, regular sales tax, we've collected $1,422,633 for month four, through month four, which is 33% of the year budget year, but we've, and we've collected 32%. We're actually, though, ahead of last year's number by 4.1%. Last year, we did not have the new sales tax, that can only be, is restricted. We've collected $450,727 so far, which is 45.07%, which, again, at 33% of the year, we're, we're ahead of the number we projected, so that's all good news, all very positive.
In response to the sales tax and the change, you know, obviously guys are down there in the rural counties versus the, I guess, urban counties. That's always a hot topic. Was there much discussion about changing this again?
There really was, and I don't believe I heard this particular sales tax brought up at all, but there really wasn't too much talked about at all down there about sales tax. It was other things.
Okay, good. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. French again for board appointments and reappointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building Services Advisory Committee, reappoint Larry Jenkins, Brent Fox, Mark Foy, Tony Lackey, David Land, Brian Walker, Darrell Robertson, Lynn Teed, Bert Gibson, John Pilkington for one year. Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Darren Connor and Miranda Bergen for three years. Planning and zoning commission, reappoint Koi Reese, two years. Adult daycare, CAC, reappoint Donna Albashan for three years. Law enforcement center renaming committee, appoint Mike Harrison and Trish Dagenhart. And Board of Health, appoint Larry Yoder for three years. The county commissioner appointments, appoint Commissioner Ryan Mayberry to finance committee, personnel committee, and Western Piedmont Council of Government, TCC and TAC committee, which are the transportation committees. Appoint Commissioner Josh Lael to the Western Piedmont Council of Government, Government Policy Board. Appoint Commissioner Milton Campbell to the Law Enforcement Center Renaming Committee. Appoint Commissioner Jeff Peel. Animal Control Advisory Board, CBCC, Alexander Center Advisory Board, DSS Board, Board of Health and Veterans Committee. Appoint Commissioner Ronnie Reese to the Vaya Health County Commissioners Advisory Board.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations, and I think for, there is a little summary of each of those people, if you didn't know them already, about who they are and what they do. Anybody like to make a motion to accept these recommendations?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the recommendations, please raise your right hand. opposed? Moving right along, Mr. French, Budget Ordinance Amendments Number 17 through 21, Project Budget Ordinance P-2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to take these one at a time and vote on each one, or do you want to?
Probably so.
Okay.
I think that'd be wise.
Okay. Budget Amendment Number 17 is to increase the sheriff's budget to purchase investigative equipment with the federal grant funds passed through the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, the Governor's Crime Commission. The grant budget details include computer, voice stress analysis system, digital evidence, forensic recovery computer, laser trajectory and alternative light source kits, photographic equipment and video camera, no local matches required. And that's Budget Amendment 17.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve Budget Amendment 17 as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about Budget Amendment Number 17? Hearing none, all those in favor of Budget Amendment Number 17, please raise your right
Budget Amendment Number 18, probably the one you've been waiting for, is the budget for the cost of an architect's, for the architect's services for the bank building renovations. The architect fees paid by the general fund can be reimbursed later from loan proceeds if the county borrows money to make the renovations. Total, it was 120, it was 125 plus another 25,000 for all the other services along with it. I was asked to ask the architectural firm if they would give us a number that would take us just through the receipt of bids, and based on the information we received back from the architect, that number was 85,000. That includes asbestos inspection and testing, site review and surveying. So you could do either, or if you want to do a budget amendment for this number or a budget amendment for this number, I just want to make you aware of those two things. And that's Budget Amendment Number 18.
Okay. Wish we'd gone to 19 first, good and 20, because I think we may get hung up here for a while. You've heard the budget amendments. Any discussion about this particular one?
Well, I'll, I'll say Milton and I had a discussion the other day about this, and I told him, as a builder, I get this question all the time. You know, they bring you a picture and a little clipping out of a magazine, and ask me, you know, how much is this house going to cost? I tell them, I have no idea how much your house is going to cost until I get a set of plans that I can look at, and I can bid out, and I can estimate. And this is what we're asking to do here, is to develop a set of plans that we can get a price on what it's going to take to outfit that building. And that's, I mean, you've just got to do it. You have to, you don't have to, but then that means the building sits there and it's not used, but, you know, or we put it up for sale, so.
I think there's some, I think there's another aspect to this also. There are several things associated with the building for the renovation, for the outfit, that we'll have to do if we do the project. For example, the heating and air conditioning system in the building was only built to, for the bank portion, which is less than a fourth of the building, so that, that's, those sizes would have to be much, much larger. The floor, the concrete floor is, would have to be, a lot of work done to it because it's not level. At the very back of the building was refrigeration units, and so there's, that floor is actually higher at the back of that building. The roof of the building probably will have to be replaced. If the discussion has been a little bit about looking at the interior, what the bank used, and maybe even taking all that out, so you'd have that demolition cost. There's asbestos and those kind of things, which are very minor, but all those things you'll have four, $500,000 worth of, worth of cost as you go into it, so I just want to point that out, and so that it's clear that the estimate that we were given was, the estimate was around $2 million. So might as well just say it like it is.
So, you know, all in, with architect figure looking about 2.5, and the purchase price?
That would include him.
Include architect. So the purchase price was 375, and I think it's 20,800 square feet, so it's like $18.07 a foot on the purchase, which obviously, I think we all feel good about the purchase, and I think we all feel good about the long-term consolidation and that type of thing. I think there was just, I will certainly say on my behalf, a little bit of sticker shock, and on the outfit cost, and, you know, just, I had a little reservation, maybe hit a pause button, don't, you know, we may land at the exact same spot, but that was, that was me, just had a little heartburn over that. And also, what else could you do with 2.5 million dollars? You know, I always use the statement, 20 years from now, somebody looks back, I don't know if anybody can armchair quarterback anything you do, that's fair, but do we become they? Why did they put that there? Why did they put two and a half million dollars in that? Was, because I think if anything our county historically has had a problem with is we've piecemealed stuff that works for now, and then lo and behold, 10, 15 years from now, you know, the we's do become the they's. So, you know, that's, that, and again, I think I'm the one that raised my hand a little bit at first, and I've, I've talked to you guys individually, and it's just my concern, and, you know, if everybody, if nobody else has that concern, but.
I have concern anytime we spend that much money, but are, are the benefits going to outweigh the cost? Is that, and that's what you got to look at. And just like we talked about, you know, everything's, so many things have been done halfway over the last 30, 40 years, that now it's, you know, us and trying to fix a lot of things. The, well, and, you know, we've just got to look at, are we going to be able to use less personnel in combining or putting a lot of these departments in the same places? Is there going to be better oversight? Are you going to get more bang for your buck for those employees? So, and we've got a lot, a lot to consider. This is just the second step. The first step was buying the building. This is the second step we've got to take, and we've got to develop the plans, and we've got to, you know, we've got kind of a rough drawing out there, but that's, that's a long way from what the final product will be if we move this route.
Chairman?
My, my opinion, and Milton, you know, the chairman and I have had a couple conversations One thing I would say with being the co-chair of the building committee at Bethlehem Baptist Church that burned a year and a half ago, and we're looking at building a much bigger, much more expensive building than we're talking about here. I mean, just, you know, just a couple things that I'll throw out there. We interviewed architects, four. They all four charged a different amount of money. We had, I want to say, you know, fees ranging from, you know, 8% of the expected cost down to, you know, we're paying four, I think we ended up paying 4.1%. And I'm going to tell you, I don't know if you've seen the design of our new facility, but it is much more than the inside of a rectangular one-story building. I actually know Ernie Seals personally. My dad would give me a real hard time about what I'm saying right now, because he and Ernie Seals are good friends. CBSA is a great firm. But have we talked to any other architectural firms? I'm going to do what my grandma used to call getting the flesh. Why not? I hate, you know, if, our church, we did, if it's my house, I'm not going to talk, call one architect and say, hey, what do you, what do you charge? Same thing with, you know, and I understand they bid it. Well, guess who bids these contracts? The companies that are big enough to have an on-staff, full-time person that their job is to watch the newspapers. So you get bids from the same four, five on anything you bid, whether it's the school system, or the county, or a bit, a large, you know, whatever. And there may very well be somebody else out there that is more than capable, that doesn't have near the overhead of a Hickory Construction, Moss Marlowe, you know, these very legit one, I mean, and I'm not saying they're not great companies, because they, you know, do a lot of good stuff, but just as, this is that private versus public thing that I have such a hard time with.
Can, can I ask a question, though?
Sure.
We put that out for bid. Is it illegal if we call people and say, hey, you know?
No, I mean, there is no, you can select an architect, you can just select one if you want to do that. You can interview, you can go through a process. We did that with our detention center. We took proposals from various architectural firms and selected a firm to do it. We went through that process for the Applied Technology Center, and CBSA was the selection for that, but we, we didn't do that. We were just trying to get a, basically at this point, trying to get to a place where we knew what the costs were going to be.
Right.
The, we'll do whatever you want us to do, just realize it'll take more time.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but we're not hiring CBSA by passing this amendment, are we?
Well, you, what you're doing.
It does not read anything about that. We're not.
That's what we were in essence doing, though.
Well, but.
With the 125.
He's, I mean, Commissioner Lael's correct. I mean, we, that's who we had talked to.
Well, but doesn't, don't we have to come back and approve?
No.
That contract? We do not?
No.
But, you know, I think that, based on that estimate, I think the finished price per square foot was about $121, and, you know, I apologize, I don't really know how that compares. I was trying to think of anything, but I've looked at recently in my job, it's, that's similar type facility, but we've got a newer facility, about the same square foot each. But I meant to look at that appraisal, just to see where that came in, but.
The facility cost compare to comparable jobs that our contractor at Applied Technologies has done, and also our engineer has worked in the past, so.
And I, and I, you know, and I'm not saying this is always the case, but I do know, you know, commercial construction firms subscribe to and use, you know, McGraw-Hill information, you know, for, I mean, this may sound crazy, but these big companies, actually McGraw-Hill puts out all this information.
Yeah.
And if you're looking to build, you know, retail office space, McGraw-Hill tells you how much it's going to roughly cost per square foot, and then you take a location factor for where you are in the United States, and you multiply that, and shazam, there's, you know, and that's their, hey, it's going to cost you about 2.1 million.
Mm-hmm.
You know, architects use the same kind of information, you know, and then, you know, okay, they're using that, you know, they're using that basic information, that, and we're trying to make a decision on spending $2 million or not, you know. You know, I just, I'm, I under, I, I'm not saying that we, by any means, that we shouldn't do this project. I'm a firm believer in, in that this project will benefit the citizens of Alexander County. I mean, if you live in Vash Thai, and you've got to drive to the old Wittenburg School to sign your child up to play T-ball, or to play volleyball, or to be a cheerleader, you know, or for, you know, the builders that walk into building inspections, you know, and you're what, mile and a half from the Catawba County line? I mean, it makes sense to have everybody there, not to mention their facility's terrible. I mean, the facility those, off, those guys are in is bad, you know, and we know, we know the health department needs more room, and this would free up another, you know, another building for them by, you know, pulling some other things, but I just, like the chairman said, I, I just have a lot of indigestion.
I have no problem whatsoever in, let's talk to some more architects, you know, slow it down by a month.
Kind of hit the pause button. I don't think we get hurt by hitting the pause button.
Think it would be very prudent to speak with other architects.
And I think, oh, I'm just gonna, I'm sorry.
Rick just wanted to say something.
I think, you know, the people, the citizens are looking at us to make the best decision, and just as they're about to say that, I, I got a little heartburn when I seen those figures. It's kind of, I guess I'm a little too logical, but if I already got the house and everything there, I would hope it wouldn't cost me as much to, you know, do the insides, but, you know, it's a different thing when we're looking at, you know, government contracts, but I really think we should maybe just pull back a little bit, get some pricing. You know, I'm tickled that we have that building, and that we can hopefully do that project. I just want to make sure we're getting the most effective dollar spent.
Well, and-
Rick just wanted to say something.
I was going to say, two, two things. One is that if, if you guys want us to do that, we'll certainly do that. We will need, we really need one of you guys to serve with us to do that, which means we should start pretty soon. And remember that if we're going to, if we're going to finance this, that'll be meetings, that'll be, we'd have to, this always got to be, all needs to work together. And the second point is, and I know we don't mean it that way, we're not, this is not the fault of CBSA. We approached them and asked them to help us.
Oh, no, no, no.
I know, but I'm just, you know, the public says it's thinking, I don't want them to think that, you know, that's going on, it's not.
Yeah.
They did a great job at our Applied Technology. We've used other architectural firms for other county projects, whether it been the law enforcement and detention center, or whether it was DSS expansion, or any of the projects, and we don't do a lot, but, but we'll certainly do that, but we'll need one of you guys to serve, at least one of you guys to serve, no more than two, serve on a committee, I know.
I would nominate Commissioner Lael for that.
Okay.
I would recommend Commissioner Lael, too.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Lael volunteers for that.
Okay, we'll, we'll get some dates.
He raised his hand, but he didn't.
No, well, I mean, and what I, the, the last comment I want to make, I think what, you know, Commissioner Mayberry was saying, and I, you know, and, and I've had, and Mel and I, or the chairman, excuse me, have had that conversation several times, you know, we've got local people that, you know, and I don't mean, you know, just any, any, any old home, you know, any old GC with a hammer and a pickup truck can do that. No, I'm not saying anybody with a hammer and a pickup truck can do this job, but, you know, I do feel like when it's, you know, which, which I don't think we've done in the past necessarily. You know, and I'm not saying being, and I, and I'm not saying being selective in any way, shape, or form, or discriminatory in any way, shape, or form, but when it's, you know, but when we are bidding this thing, you know, let's contact building inspections and say, who are the bill, you know, who's pulled, who's pulled a commercial permit in Alexander County in the last whatever, and, you know, you know, and, you know, because I, I do believe that there are local, you know, local people that have the capability of doing this job and doing it well. You know, there are other commercial projects in the county that small, you know, smaller people have done, and-
Let, let me, uh-
And who, and I'm not saying that that would definitely save money, but it may. And if so, you know, and if they come in with a better number than some of the big guys, super.
And, and most likely they'd have to be bonded.
Oh, absolutely.
You require a performance bond on something like this.
And like I say, I don't, and I don't mean just, you know, just Joe Blow off the street, I mean legitimate, you know, legitimate construction companies.
Unlimited license.
You'd have to have unlimited license, you'd have to be bonded.
You've got to have property liability insurance.
Yeah, you've got to have all these things, and, and there's very few of us out there that would fall under that, but there are some of us.
Yeah.
And I would mention one other thing about plans, because, and, and architect that you hire, you don't always just hire the cheapest person available, and Josh has built a lot of projects and so forth, and if you hire, always hire the cheapest person available, you're going to run into trouble. And as far as architects go, we've got a project we're working on right now, and it had lots of barriers in it, and it has cost a lot of money and time because of some errors, so.
We're just trying to find the right value for the buck.
Right, and, you know, and that's, and that's, that's the, yeah, there's no, it's, there's not a simple answer, or we'd be doing it now, in my opinion. I mean, and when I say a simple answer, there's not a simple way to do this project, knowing that we did all our due diligence, that we are getting the most for our money, and I say our money, I'm talking about, you know, hey, that fund balance is up because we had to raise taxes. Well, guess what? People weren't happy about that, including myself. Okay, well, let's not waste that, you know, let's do our darndest on this particular project, as well as, you know, all the others like we have been, to not waste that additional money that we said, hey, everybody, you've got to pay.
I, I think it is a good idea to, to look at this, and let's, I make the proposal that, uh-
Table it.
Do we just-
Table this budget, table this budget.
Yeah, let's table that, and let's get-
Let's move on to the next one.
Yeah, get some-
Want to motion to table it?
Bids.
You need a motion to table it, Rick.
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear that motion?
I will move that we table budget ordinance amendment number 18.
Okay.
Second, then.
Got a motion in second concerning budget amendments number 18. All those in fa, any more, excuse me, is there any more discussion about it before we, but, okay, hearing none, all those in favor of tabling the item, raise your right hand.
Uh, one other question, are we all in agreement that Josh represent the board on that?
I thought that's what y'all-
Yeah, okay.
That's what I took it.
All right, I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with that.
What did y'all volunteer?
You didn't pay the debt.
Oh, that doesn't have to be a formal motion, does it? All right, Mr. French, next one.
Budget amendment number 19 is to budget for the local match required by the ARC grant for the industrial park pump station replacement project. When the fiscal year 2017 budget was being prepared, the local match amount was estimated $175,000, and was originally budgeted as a transfer from the general fund to the county water and sewer fund. Since the pump station replacement project will require a separate project budget ordinance, the county will use a project fund to account for the revenues and expenditures instead of using the existing county water and sewer fund, which has an annual budget. The $175,000 budget estimate is being moved to the grant project fund, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, and increased by $123,349 to meet the ARC match, grant match requirement. And that's budget amendment number 19. That is the pump, uh, uh, station, uh, project, replacement, uh, project at the industrial park.
Okay, entertain a motion for budget ordinance amendment number 19.
I'll move to approve budget ordinance amendment number 19.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion about budget amendment number 19?
Amazing what's it which costs. Got to get it out there.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of budget amendment number 19, please raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. French.
Number 20 is to budget for the local match required by the ARC grant for the broadband study. And that is $10,000 match, total of $20,000 for the, that project.
I'll move to approve budget ordinance amendment number 20.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about budget amendment number 20? Hearing none, all those in favor of budget amendment number 20, please raise your right hand. Okay.
Budget amendment number 21 is to decrease the amount budgeted as contingency expense due to revenues that will be less than originally budgeted. CBCC is waiving the industry contributions to the project, so the source of revenue is not available, and that's at $137,000. That reduces that project cost. That is more than the project actually does cost, though, so the project up there will not cost quite that amount of money, total.
Say that again, then?
The total amount for the project is not 2.7 million dollars, it's closer to 2.4, 2.3, somewhere in that range. So 137 is not, is not needed for that purpose.
So, so essentially, the companies that pledged mon, pledged money to help with the expense of the building are not-
That's-
-making that contribution because the building didn't cost quite as much as-
Yes, sir.
We anticipate, as was anticipated.
The, the industries were told at the beginning of the project that if, if their pledges were not needed, they would not be required to pay them. I will tell you that in, in their defense, they are paying for the scholarships, for all the folks that participate, and for the kids. So there, there's quite a bit of money over time that they're going to be pledging to the project, and there, there's a lot of assistance that they're providing to the students.
Okay, for budget amendment number 21, someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve budget ordinance amendment number 21.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any more discussion about budget amendment number 21?
Were they given the option to go ahead and make their, their gift?
I'm sure they have that option. They may not want to exercise it this time. All those in favor of budget amendment number 21, please raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. French.
The last budget, we have a project ordinance, and that's for the Alexander County broadband study, and that's what we mentioned earlier, $10,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission, and $10,000 from Alexander County, for a total of $20,000. And then the, the $20,000 is going to be used for consulting fees for the project.
And as you may not aware, the broadband is going to be a longer-term project, I think. Commissioner Mayberry and I sat in on the first meeting, and this is not something that happens overnight, but it could have a really positive impact on our county and our internet access throughout the county, as well as the quality of the services, and potentially create more competition and ultimately pricing of the services, so, but this is the beginning, and I could see this taking several years to come to fruition.
And, and I'll add, you, you asked me earlier about the association meetings in Raleigh that we had last week. If sales tax was a big topic, no, it wasn't, but broadband was a big topic. So you've got, on the federal level and the state level, this is going to be a, a lot of, a lot of the, you know, the work going forward is going to fall into this category, so.
I guess we need a motion on that to accept project budget ordinance P-2.
I'll move to approve project ordinance P-2.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion in seconds, or any discussion?
I think this, I think this is a good investment of a small amount of money.
Game changer, possibly. All those in favor of project budget ordinance P-2, please raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. French.
Under county manager's report, a couple of things to mention. One is that MBI builders will start Rocky Face Park Phase Two on January 30th. The project consists of construction of basically a building, entrance drive, parking area, water and sewer, sanitary sewer utilities, storm drainage, erosion control. Contract time for the project is, is 180 days. We have to be finished by September, into September, because our part of funds expire then, so that'll be starting soon, and we'll keep you advised of that. The 2017, 2018 just seems like we just finished the other budget process, but the 2017, 2018 budget calendar for Alexander County is enclosed, and I just want to sort of give, highlight some dates. You have that in your packet. February 21st, there'll be a department head meeting where budget information will be distributed to department heads and mailed and to outside agencies. Budget requests and revenue estimates are due to the finance department, and outside agency requests are also due to finance by March 31st. The finance department provides a printout to the county manager by April 21st. School board requests are due by April 25th from the, from the school board. May 1st, the county commissioners discuss budget topics, if there's things that we need to talk about as we get into the budget, just ideas and things. May 15th, at our commissioners' meeting, I'll submit a budget and a budget message. The county manager is required to provide a copy of the balanced budget to you by May the 30th. And then possible budget work sessions later in May. Commissioners could hold a public hearing on June 5th, which, which is our scheduled first meeting in June, and then additional work sessions could be held between that date and June 19th is the suggested commissioners' meeting where we would adopt the 2017, 2018 budget. You don't need to approve that, that's just the, that's sort of the framework of which we use every year, just want to put that out there. And also, this is not a big deal, but it's important to the county. We had some Rocky Face calendars made, we're selling them for $7 apiece, they're gorgeous. We had, people in the county took pictures each month, and we had, those pictures are included in the Rocky Face calendar, so if you have not purchased one yet, there's some at the park for sale, we have some at county offices. We don't have a whole lot, but they're beautiful, and like you consider purchasing one. And the very last thing, we, you've heard us talk about, probably you don't want us to hear you talk about anymore, is the vertical mile challenge. We've had a large number of people participate, most of those are Alexander County residents. Over 1,349 people are in the process of doing the one mile challenge. 380 are in the process of doing the five mile challenge, and 90 are doing the 10 mile challenge, and we have five more that are also doing the 100 laps and probably should be looked at for mental health. But that's all I have, I have some, some items for closed session.
Well, you've got that volume eating deal, you know, for those people that just keep running and running and running.
I know, I know.
Take them with you.
Who's chasing them?
Who? It must be something bad bottom of that hill.
Oh, it's something good, that's why people keep going up.
Okay, gentlemen, you also have, and you're back at the consent agenda, so need a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. As have it. Guess we're to the part we all like. At this point in time, we will go into closed session, North Carolina General Statute 143 318.11, to discuss economic development, contractual, and personnel. We will reconvene only to adjourn. So like that in a form of a motion to go to closed session?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.